Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Coordinating. It's a video conference call of June 25, 2020. We apologize for the delay getting started. The chairman was running late. Sorry about that, guys. So I'll get started here. We're going to do the roll call. Roll call is Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Jim Bonanno is here. Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Louis Campagna.
Present.
Great. We're going to make right now approve the planning board meeting. So I make a motion to approve the February 27, 2020, planning board minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And that is subject to the handful of small revisions that I provided to Margaret to forward on to Dina Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nemisak, and thank you, Dina, for putting up with Phil.
I'm the only one who appreciates the good work that she does. Fully appreciates it by reading every word.
Thank you both. So let's see. So a couple of announcements about these planning board meetings. In order to catch up on some of the applications, the planning boards can hold a special meeting on July 21, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. It will also be a Zoom meeting. These applications, a few of the applications on the agenda have been adjourned till that time, till the 21st. The first is application 1902, 249 Main Street. The second is application 2008, 291 Main Street. And then 2019, 189 slash 191, 191 Brook. Let's see. So that being said, there's a little bit of protocol that I think if you're attending the Zoom meeting, if you were at the last one, you might remember. If this is new, I'll try and make it clear because I've been given written instructions. I'll give them to you. First of all, if you would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Mr. Tedesco will acknowledge you and invite you to speak. Please unmute your mic and state your name and address. Address your comments and questions to board numbers only, and you will be acknowledged once the board has opened or reopened the public hearing. That being, that being said, we could get right into the agenda. So let's see. What's our whole business? Yep, we're going straight to the agenda. So the first application is 1942, 5 Ray Place. So we're going to start, we're going to start just in general. We're trying to figure out the environmental impacts of this project. So in order to do that, we've done a number of things. We've looked at the three day presentation, and we, right now, we are looking at a, some traffic issues. And then we're going to look at the sanitary sewer with Mr. Tramelli. So the first presentation, the first gentleman speaking today is Mr. Phil Greeley, who was also at the last meeting. So, Mr. Greeley, would you take it away and tell us what you, what you have there?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and public. So we had attended previous meetings, and we had prepared, I guess, three previous written reviews of the traffic studies and the various plans that were presented for the application. The applicant has made resubmissions, addressed all of those items. At the last meeting, there were really three or four related outstanding items that we felt we needed to button up in order to make the secret determination. In the previous written reviews, there were certain items that we have identified that need to be part of site plan approval conditions, et cetera. So I'm not going to really get into those because we've already kind of discussed all those relative to, you know, limits of the resurfacing along Ray Place, the works on traffic control during construction. But the three items I'd like to focus on, which the applicant did address after the last meeting, they, JMC made a submission on June 11th. We received that submission and prepared our June 19th kind of summary letter, two-page items three, four, and five, which were the items that were outstanding. And I'll just give a quick summary of those and where we are. So the first item was relative to the coordination with the shopping center next door in terms of the limits of the sidewalk that the applicant is building along their frontage, and also relative to some signing and striping. And they have been in touch with the highway superintendent and will continue to coordinate those as part of the site plan approval. So I believe that condition has been, you know, addressed. Again, it ties into pedestrian and traffic interface between the 5 Ray Place site and the Chico's Shopping Center, you know, entrance there. So I think that's fine. They'll just continue to make those coordinations and will be part of that. The second item really related to an existing condition that we asked the applicant to address, which is traffic exiting from Ray Place onto Brook Street is currently restricted in terms of site distance looking to the left. So that would be looking west along Brook Street. There is on-street parking, and when you have a large vehicle there, vehicles exiting from Ray Place under existing conditions have trouble seeing oncoming traffic. So the applicant had previously prepared sightline diagrams, which indicated the current shortfall. And they have prepared in their June 11th response, some sightline diagrams showing what could be done to enhance that. The enhancements would be advanced signing notification, which is typical with signing per the manual uniform traffic control devices. That would be coordinated with the county and the highway superintendent as part of their permits. And there was also an indication from the town board that they may be amenable to the removal of one of those spaces. Now, all of the spaces along Brook Street are metered spaces, and that they would be amenable to a possible removal of one space and to look at where possibly, if there are other locations, to get more on-street parking. So with that said, the applicant prepared diagrams and showed that the removal of one space would significantly improve the site distance for vehicles exiting. So that would improve the existing condition. And they prepared, you know, a diagram indicating that. And currently, the site distance is limited to somewhere under 100 feet of site distance, which is not acceptable, you know, based on current standards. With the removal of one space and really looking at it from where the vehicle would be positioned exiting, that would increase to about 135 feet, a significant increase over existing conditions. So I think they've demonstrated that. They went a little bit further and looked at the possibility, and again, these would all be hashed out later on, the possibility of gaining one space to the, along the frontage of the CVS where there is metered parking. And the parking there is recessed. It's off of the travel way, so that, you know, doesn't impede sightlines. And the only real issue that they did look at was relative to the loading dock for CVS is immediately adjacent to Ray Place. And based on their diagrams, that it looks like one space could be, one additional metered space could be added there, and it would not impact the sightlines. So that would end up with a net result of zero lost spaces. If the one space was removed looking to the left and one was gained to the right, it would be a net loss of zero metered spaces, but it would improve that existing condition. So they've gone through the whole analysis, and, you know, the final details would be worked out with the town and with the county, since Brook Street is a county road. They did do one step further. If that one space is gained near CVS and two parking spaces removed west of Ray Place, there would be further enhancements to the site distances at that location, again, increasing it to over 160 feet of site distance. So I think they've addressed it. It's an existing condition as part of their permits with the reconstruction of the sidewalks and their tie-ins with the utilities with Westchester County. Those can be finalized as that site plan approval process. The other item, which was an issue that was raised early on, as you know, when they did their initial traffic study, the shopping center wasn't occupied, the supermarket space was not occupied. So we had them evaluate a reoccupancy with the Chico's space based on the trip generation for that type of store. And they did that. They presented that back in, I think, in their February application. We were concerned about the amount of traffic they showed, their distribution of traffic. They had more traffic going out through Route 22. So they did a subsequent analysis that looked at a higher level of traffic exiting at Ray Place and analyzed that and showed that it would function adequately and that with the site distance improvements would be a better operation. The last item, there was a public comment that asked about, was there a need for a traffic signal at that intersection? So we had requested that a traffic signal warrant analysis be prepared. There are standards. You can't just install a traffic signal just because you want to. So you have to satisfy these warrants. They prepared a warrant analysis that indicated that, based on the projected volumes, a traffic signal would not be warranted or necessary at that intersection. We reviewed that analysis and are in agreement with it. They looked at the various warrants. One warrant that they didn't look at in detail, we looked at the available hourly data from the county, and we agree with their conclusion that it wouldn't satisfy those warrants. So those were the three items. They've addressed each of those. We have our recommendations of conditions if and when they get to their site plan approval. That would be part of any approval resolution. But they've addressed everything that we've asked for up to this point in time.
Jim, you're muted.
Thanks, Margaret. Hey, so, Mr. Greeley, thank you very much for your summary. It was very informative. It certainly answers all my questions about what's going on there. Gentlemen in the board, any questions for Mr. Greeley?
Just out of curiosity, do we know when the Chico store is slated to open? I'm certain it would be well before this, this application ever saw its way to development. But I know it looks like the, you know, it's getting fairly close to the point where it's going to open.
Yeah, I should know the answer to that question, and I don't. But they have been, they were allowed to construct even during the shutdown because they're a food service establishment. So they've been moving ahead fairly quickly. So I don't think it's going to be too much longer.
Yeah. My point is simply that we should, we are probably going to be getting actual data, albeit at a strange time. And particularly, opening a business during this particular time is, may not give us a true read on, on the amount of, the volume of traffic that it's going to generate once things hopefully return to normal. But we should be getting at least some indication in the fairly near future about the increase in traffic due to the Chico's, Chico's and Sons supermarket, which I think will have a much more substantial impact on traffic than, than with this application for what it's worth.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Tramelli to speak with us about the, about this application.
Sure. Good evening. We've also reviewed several iterations of the site plan prepared by the applicant. We've provided your board with four memos, including the latest one dated June 23rd that you have before you tonight. And similar to Mr. Greeley's experience, they've been working through with iterations of the plans, addressing the majority of our comments. Many of them have been resolved completely. There are a few very minor site-related details, specific to sidewalks and paving limits, and some of the very minor nuances for the site. I don't see any issue or any, certainly any hesitation that they'll be addressed satisfactorily when they return for site plan approval and then complete the application. There are a few of the larger, I guess, secret related items, one of which was stormwater. And as you may recall, the applicant had proposed a certain type of system initially. We had some comment on how the off-site drainage from the Chico parking lot that was left to be undeveloped would impact the system. They've gone back twice now. They've rethought the system. They've provided us with a preliminary stormwater management plan. We've reviewed it. We are in agreement with the system in general. We think there is, we still do need some of the finer details with regard to the modeling and some of the interconnections and the like of the system. But I don't see that the mitigation for the stormwater resulting from the development will be a negative impact. They, they mitigate, they've sized the system to mitigate through the 100-year storm event. And in their analysis, they've assumed that the existing parking lot that will be redeveloped is actually, they've modeled it as a vacant site in a natural wooded condition. So a very conservative approach. They've taken, you know, what could be a best-case scenario for the least amount of runoff and applied that to a site that today is paved. So they've taken a very conservative approach at analyzing the existing conditions of the site and then did a post-developed analysis with their development and have sized a, an appropriate mitigation system for the property. We'll still need to verify some of the soil conditions with some soil testing. That will certainly come at a later date. Again, it's, that becomes a design consideration if, by some chance, infiltration is not a suitable practice there. There is enough room. We could, I'm sure they can design a closed system and provide the same level of mitigation. The other larger issue is the sewer and water supply. They're aware, and the board is aware, that they'll ultimately need approval from the Westchester County Health Department for extensions to both the sanitary main and water main to serve the property. Both extensions will come off of the existing mains located in Brook Street. I noted in my memo that we were waiting for a capacity analysis for the existing sanitary sewer in the immediate, in the immediate vicinity of the project. And since this memo was issued, I, I've been, I've received and been able to review that study. And they've satisfactorily demonstrated that, from a capacity standpoint, the existing sanitary sewer immediately connected, or that the site will immediately connect to, has adequate capacity for the increased sewer load from their building. The, what's been the point of discussion in the last few meetings is more of a global look at how sanitary sewer is handled in this sewer shed. The project, as proposed, with the number of units in it, will generate a daily sewer load of approximately 2,600 gallons a day. Westchester County has a policy where they request that the municipality consider a three-to-one mitigation ratio for projects such as this so that you, the applicant would offset the proposed sewer load in the system threefold. So we have 2,600 gallons roughly coming off of this site once developed, which would require approximately, it's almost 8,000 gallons a day in a reduction in inflow and infiltration, or INI. So we had, we've gone back and forth a few times with the applicant, discussed some alternatives. They are proposing, actually, I'd step back and say, one of, one of the alternatives was to revisit the MTA bypass that you know very well with the Jackson, the Summerfield Street property. They have since sent a letter to the MTA requesting that they revisit this proposal. And what this would do would provide a secondary means of overflow. Should the existing sanitary sewer in Harney be surcharged or overwhelmed, this would be a secondary line and provide a, an alternate means of bypass and flow to relieve the system and prevent, or at least probably largely mitigate the surcharge that occurs today. That would be the, I guess, the desired alternative for the town and the, the community. Although it's, it's in the hands of the MTA. So we don't have a response from them yet that I'm aware of. I don't know that the applicant has heard back from them yet. But if they were to come back, you know, saying, I guess, decline the idea or deny the ability to install that bypass, the applicant has proposed an option where they would study a, the sanitary manhole, existing sanitary manhole, immediate down, immediately downgrade from the property at the intersection of Brook Street and Ray Place for a, and do a dry weather and wet weather flow monitoring to see what the, the difference is and see what the INI into that system at that location would be. They've also committed to televising as much as 3,000 feet of sanitary sewer, and they've allocated a certain amount of money towards repairs that the applicant would make. I think in concept, it's a, it's a good idea. I think the board needs to take a look at it and, and weigh that option. The only concern I have with that option is that we're not guaranteed to find the 8,000 or 9,000 gallons a day to offset the 3,000 that the project will, or the 2,600 that the project will contribute to the system. It, it might be better suited that the highway department, the applicant, or our office get together, look at the town maps, try and figure out some maybe historically known problem areas and study, study those areas. This may not, this particular manhole in this immediate area of the site may not be a troubled area in the sewer system. So we may, they may do a study. They may find adequate INI to offset the project. They may not. But with the way it's proposed right now, it's that, you know, they've defined a study area, and there's no guarantee that we find the offset that we're looking for for the mitigation. So I think that's something that we'll need, that we need to discuss, or the board needs to discuss with the applicant. I don't know if they'd be willing to commit to a study of the sewer shed to find an appropriate level of mitigation. It doesn't have to be immediate to the site. It's, you know, anywhere in that sewer system that, that ultimately drains to the same point or discharges to the same point will help offset the problem in that sewer shed. So that's really, I think, on our end, one of the last final points to, to get to some kind of resolution. Everything else has been largely addressed. We did have, we did see the comments from the fire department. I think aside from some final details on where, you know, maybe a knox box needs to be located or the final approved location of a fire hydrant, I think they've, and Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're in a good place with this application from a fire safety standpoint.
Yes.
So I think at this point, it's really just a matter of understanding the sewer mitigation and making sure that the board is comfortable with what's being proposed.
Sure. Thank you. So let me just understand that you've presented it very well. So what's being proposed is to look at the manhole at the end of the street, right? And see if there's anything that could be mitigated at that location or just do a flow test there?
It would be flow monitoring at the sanitary manhole at the bottom of Ray Place.
Sure.
Which, which has a significant sewer area that drains through it as well. It goes across Route 22, I believe, and picks up some of the neighborhood on the, on the east side of Route 22. So it could very well be a good location, find what we're looking for. The problem is, it may also not. So, you know, there's no guarantee that studying that one manhole is going to find the, the offset volume that we're looking for.
I see. So if the study is conducted and it's not found, they've done their, they've done their work? Or do they, is that one study?
Oh, that, that's what they're proposing right now. They're proposing to study a manhole and televise 3,000 feet of sewer pipe. We haven't defined that, the 3,000 feet that would be televised yet. But like I said, my, my only concern is that we do this work. If you were to agree, if you were to agree to the proposal as it is, if, once they do this work, they've satisfied that condition, but there's no guarantee that we find the volume that we're looking for.
Right. So the whole three-to-one ratio, wouldn't it actually be put into use? We'd just be studying here?
It could go either way. We could get more than we needed. We could get less. But until the study's done, we won't know.
But Joe, didn't you say, rather than have them do the study that they proposed, you were recommending sitting down with the highway superintendent and maybe having them study an area that he already knows is problematic? And that way, so, so they, they, they've proposed this particular scenario. But if I'm understanding correctly, to avoid what you're suggesting, Jim, that they may not find anything, is maybe meet with the highway superintendent and Joe Tramelli to discuss where we know there's problematic areas and then to study. And, and to be clear, especially if residents are listening, you know, nothing has to be decided tonight. There are options for mitigation measures, and one was to hear back from the MTA. But this will be at least a month or so before the zoning board. You know, we have the August break, plus it'll be coming back to the ARV, and plus it'll be coming back to you. So there is time to keep evaluating this and looking into what the best option is.
I see. So we don't have to decide on this right now? We could wait?
No, in fact, I don't think you should because I, I think it sounds like Joe was recommending sitting down with the applicant and the highway superintendent, who is very familiar with the sanitary sewer systems, and, and maybe coming up with a, a solution that everybody feels will work if the MTA solution doesn't pan out.
Okay. I understand now.
Margaret, at what point would we need to, or who is, who, who would make that decision? Because I understand the, the applicant, and I think certainly the residents from the north end who've chimed in so far have expressed a preference to see if we could make it work with the MTA this time. And I'm certainly very pleased to hear that the applicant has, has reached out to the MTA and is attempting to make that work. So if, if that somehow works this time, then I, I think it's a win-win. But it's, it's if that doesn't work that we have two options that Mr. Tramelli has suggested, one of which, I think somewhat poetically, Joe mentioned that this Brook Street sewer at Ray might not be troublesome, which is sort of a preview of our troublesome Brook application coming later, I would think. But, but there's a, I guess, a very real possibility that this is not a problematic area. I, I didn't quite understand, like, how, and I, I don't think I'll bore everybody with asking you to explain what the difference is between taking, or how the testing is actually done. I'll take it on, on faith that you would be able to tell if there was a problem by doing this testing. But the, the other option that you're suggesting may be a, a more rewarding one is to sit down with, with the, the people who know and identify an area that we know is problematic, that we, you know, that if we, if we get to that point, maybe it's best to focus our efforts on that and get a, get a kind of a known fix. But at what point does, does the town commit to, to designating? If MTA works, I think that's an easy one. But at what point does the town, or, and who makes the decision as to whether to, to, to go on Brook Street and Ray in that sewer system or to look at, at something else in the sewer shed? as to whether to, to, to go on Brook Street and Ray and that sewer system, or to look at, at something else in the sewer shed?
Two things. I mean, I, I think that you, it, it's basically the planning board's decision. And, and, and if I were you, I would defer to the expertise of our highway superintendent and our civil engineering consultants. And I really trust that they would work with you to identify. You know, you want to have the biggest benefit for the work that's done.
Of course.
So, and, and again, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, even though we're saying something may not be problematic, this is still in the same sewer shed area, correct? So it would, it would help mitigate problem areas. It may just not be one particular.
Sure. The, the, the majority of the problem is, is presumed to be a result of INI. So no matter where you eliminate it, it's that much less flow that needs to go through the system. So it's not going to solve all the problems, but it will mitigate the development that's being proposed.
In the same area, like, you know, Joe and I were talking earlier today, it's not like they would find an area down in Chester Heights or something. It, it's within the same sanitary sewer shed area.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Problems in that area.
Right. Thank you for making that clear, Margaret. That's what I was thinking. Now, it's, if it's done in this sewer shed area, it benefits the area and not another area. Okay. That was my only question also.
But we, we can put off making that decision as to what the preferred option is. I, I, I would think up until the point where we were voting on the application, right?
Yeah, we need time to study.
Know what the best alternatives are yet, but, but you do know that there are alternatives.
Yes, and, and the applicant is willing.
Willing. So, so I, I think it's just now just taking the time to determine what the best alternative is.
Right. And, and this consideration was being addressed one way or another. So.
Yes.
The impact on the area is going to be zero, because it's going to be addressed one way or another. Okay. I got it. Are we?
So do you want to hear from, see if the, well, see if the board has any other questions? And then otherwise, you see if the applicant has, wants to interject.
Sure. Any more questions?
I have no questions, Mark.
No, I don't.
Sounds like a no.
And I, I just want to point out that, that this broadcast and our sizable at-home viewing audience would probably get much higher ratings than would televising 3,000 feet of sewage flowing down. So, which is, I guess, what the applicant has volunteered to do.
Someone started doing, right? Someone, they have to hire someone to do it.
I know. I understand. It's, they're looking, they're looking for defects in the system by doing so.
I guess let's go to the applicant and see if they have anything to put forth.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, not, nothing else to add. You know, Phil and Joe summed everything up perfectly. And just, you know, looking forward to, to working forward and, and just addressing the, the remaining comments toward, you know, for the sanitary and for the stormwater. Nothing really else, though.
Would you just state your name?
Rick Bolander. Rick Bolander from JMC.
Okay, cool. All right.
And so, and maybe everybody's clear on this. I think what the applicant is hoping you'll do is adopt a negative declaration for speaker and then refer them to the zoning board. So the zoning board can begin a consideration of the area variances.
Sure. Okay. Should we talk to the public first, right? We have a public hearing, do the motion.
We have a public hearing still open, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Mr. DeSco. Can we go to the public hearing and see if there's any questions or comments? That's got to be Lewis.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard or ask a question of board, please just use the raise your hand feature on the chat and I will, I will permit you to, to unmute yourself. Okay, I see one. Please identify yourself and give your address.
Let's see, they're muted still, so let me see. Unmute, okay. Mr. Sweeney, you'll need to unmute yourself. Let me see if I can do this. Let's see. Mr. Sweeney, you're still muted, and I'm trying to unmute you, so I think you need to do that.
He does. His hand has been withdrawn.
Okay, so maybe he's having trouble. I did, I did forward, oh, he's back.
Oh, wait, it's again.
Do you hear the birds in the background?
Yes.
Put myself on.
Yeah, we definitely like the birds, but.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, you can unmute yourself if you want to make a comment. Just please identify yourself first.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, it's Frank Sweeney, 22 Lakeview Avenue. I have a series of three questions, and I think I can net it out pretty quickly. Margaret, I'm just wondering whether the planning board members had received the photos that I sent you specifically as it relates to the Woodruff Avenue and the Scarsdale.
They did. I forwarded that the same time you sent it to me, and I forwarded your second email to them as well. So they did receive both, including the one with, that had the photos. And our consultants did as well.
And we've reviewed them, yeah.
Sold the email and reviewed the photos, yes.
Okay, I do appreciate it. Three items. Is that during this period of time that we've been walking along this development, has a developer actually spoken to the DeChico people to identify that some of the residents in this new building may or may not pass through their, their parking lot to exit out onto Route 22?
Okay, first question. We'll answer that.
Okay.
What's your other question?
The second question is, is that, does this whole thing fall apart if they do not get the waiver or the variances from the MTA?
Okay, why don't you keep going, and then I'll try and answer as you present them.
Okay, fine. The third step would be, has the highway department acknowledged the fact that we're going to take a couple of parking spaces away on the access to Ray Place as you come down the hill?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, yeah.
One of the most important that we, we haven't really touched on yet is that the traffic or the flow, where is it going to come when it comes down Ray Place onto Brook Street? And it needs to get to Woodruff and Lakeview Avenue in that sewer to get across underneath the culvert of the railroad tracks. Can you provide a schematic from the way it comes down the hill to the Brook Street depot, if you will, and then down into the areas of Woodruff and Lakeview Avenue, which we know right now continues to be a problem area, because it's not just the piping. It's an entire infrastructure issue. And we've been around this thing for many, many years. We haven't fixed it, and all of a sudden now we have another proposal in front of us. And we're now looking at, how do we get it fixed? And I know there's been a couple of issues where maybe an eight-inch overflow issue would, would help. But I'm more concerned about the immediacy of the infrastructure of the piping. And if it's going down Woodruff Avenue, we know that for a fact, that at 700 Scarsdale Avenue, on a bad day, we're getting household sewage spewed onto Scarsdale Avenue. And that's not, there's no, no surprise that that's been happening a long, long time. And this is not going to help it. I'm just trying to determine if they're going to attempt to get to the real issue of what's going to happen.
Can, oh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. So now we'll address that. What were you saying, Margaret?
I was going to say, maybe either Rick or Joe Trumelli could, could readdress the very last question that Mr. Sweeney had, and, and then maybe we could go back to the other ones. But you keep kind of coming back to that same question.
I was going to try, but I think Mr. Trumelli could probably address it better.
You probably all know more than me by now.
Taught us, right?
So as I was explaining earlier, as, as long as this, this project is going to produce a load of, you know, a sewer load to the system, the requirement for the three-to-one mitigation will certainly offset what this project will introduce into the system. And theoretically, two more times that. It's not going to solve all the problems in this, in the system. You know, there've been longstanding issues, you know, as a result of age of the infrastructure and just development over the years. And, you know, typically that, that entire burden would not be borne by the single applicant. But they are providing or would be providing mitigation at a safety, factor of safety of three essentially, right? So they'll be offsetting three times what their project would, would introduce to the system. The fact that a specific location on Scarsdale Avenue, you know, is unfortunately the, seems to be the recipient of the majority of the issues. It's the lowest lying area in the sewer shed. So, you know, just by sheer gravity, unfortunately, that's the, the spot that it's, the problems in the system are probably experienced the most. But as I said earlier, any, any reduction in INI in the overall system will certainly help that case. As I said, it's not going to eliminate it, it won't cure it, but it will certainly, it will certainly help, and it'll be a step in the right direction. I don't know if that, that answers it for the resident?
Maybe it starts by the route or the flow from Ray Place down to Woodruff and Lakeview Avenue. What is, what is going to be the, how's it going to get there?
The sewer, the sewer system, the infrastructure is already there, right? It, it comes from Harney and Scarsdale Road, it comes up Brook Street, it continues on Route 22. So that infrastructure is already there, it's, it's there to be connected to. They are extending that system up Ray Place with an extension to the sewer main. It'll be public, publicly owned, it'll have to get approval by the health department, it'll get dedicated to the town eventually, and it'll become the, the sanitary sewer and manhole for the extension on Ray Place will become town property and the responsibility of the town. The private service connection that will go from this new extended public main to the building will be the maintenance and ownership by the property owner. But the, the route, the only change to the route is the addition of a short sewer spur up Ray Place. All the other infrastructure would remain as is. Unless, of course, the MTA were to come back and say they agree with the bypass, then there would be an additional public main from Scarsdale Avenue underneath the MTA right of way, as was proposed years ago. But without that, the only change to the infrastructure would be the connection or the extension up Ray Place.
Thank you. So, Margaret, why don't we address the question from Mr. Sweeney about the MTA variances?
Yeah, they, so, they, they're not requesting a variance from the MTA. My understanding is they're requesting a permit from the MTA that would allow them to do that bypass, bypass. And you guys that are expert on this, correct me if I'm wrong. So if they don't get the permit to do the bypass, bypass pass option, excuse me, then there are the other mitigation options that Joe Trumelli discussed previously. So the ideal scenario would be that they obtain a permit from the MTA that would allow them to do a bypass alternative. If they don't receive that, there are other alternatives such as Joe Trumelli had discussed. So that would not kill the project.
And Mr., as Mr. Trumelli described, if they don't get the, the permit from the MTA, actually, the project is going to make the situation better, because it's going to mitigate three times the runoff from this project. So things will actually get better.
But I, I do want to qualify that, because we, we have some responsibility to, working with other town officials to make sure we, we choose the best option, that we don't choose an option that, that's going to result in, you know, a wash, so to speak. That, that if, if, if we do our jobs right, identify, as, as Mr. Trumelli suggested, might be a, a, a good second option if the MTA option doesn't work. If, if we pick a location in the sewer shed that we know to be a problematic one, that, that we should be able to address that in a way that we're, that, that, as you said so artfully, Mr. Banano, we should ultimately have a negative, we, we should have a positive impact by virtue of this application being built together with this, this mitigation factor, the three-to-one factor. So that if, if we do nothing, we're guaranteed to get no, if, if this, if this application is not built, we're guaranteed to be in the same position. Whereas if we, if we require the applicant in moving forward to mitigate at this three-to-one ratio, we should, in theory, if done right, have, have a better system. The, the, the net impact should be a positive impact, not a negative impact. I, I know this is an issue that we've, at, at the, at the last meeting and the meeting before that, the same issue has come up. And I, I, there, there seems to be a reluctance to accept the possibility that the, the net effect could be a positive one on the sewer system.
Yeah, you know, Phil, I, I have to agree with you on that. You know, if it, if it stands as it does today, there's going to be no improvement. But regardless of what happens with this development, there, there will be a better, which, just to put it into simple terms, I think is a positive thing. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. Margaret, the one that I wrote next, I guess we could address pretty quickly, is the comment about the highway department.
Yeah, Sweeney was asking about, did the highway department evaluate? Or were they involved in the discussion with regard to removing parking spaces? I believe that was the question.
It was.
And actually, the elimination of the parking space on Brook Street, it has to be approved by the town board. So I discussed that personally with the town supervisor, showed him the plans, discussed what the issues and options were. He actually felt comfortable eliminating one parking space, which I believe, according to both the applicant and Phil Greeley, will improve site distances there. And Phil, I'm not sure, were we talking about potentially adding a parking space on the east side on Brook Street there, east of Ray Place, or would we just be eliminating the one parking space?
Correct. That we were looking at the possibility of adding back in the space to the east.
Yeah. So, so the supervisor, initially, there was some discussion about potentially removing three parking spaces. And the supervisor didn't feel that the town board was comfortable with that because of the need for parking for some of the businesses on Brook Street there. But by removing one space, we felt that improved the site distance without negatively impacting parking options for other businesses. And then there's also the possibility that that space could be replaced just on the other side of Ray Place on Brook Street. So on the east side of, of Ray, at the intersection of Ray Place and Brook Street. So, yes. So, so, so the highway, and the highway superintendent is aware of that, but that was really a town board decision. And then I, I think the other question, and the applicant can answer this, I'll just say one thing, whether DeChicos was contacted. I, I know that the property owner was contacted and notified about the application. So they have had an opportunity to comment if they chose to. They have chosen not to comment. And I, I do know that they're aware that there is a proposal on this property. I can't say whether the applicant actually spoke directly from anyone affiliated with DeChicos. But I, I know that the owner of the property, the landlord, is, is, is at least aware of the project, or should be.
That kind of answers the first question about the applicant speaking with DeChicos about residents who's going through his parking lot.
Yeah, I'm assuming Rick or Anthony, can you ans, I'm assuming you didn't speak directly to anyone at DeChicos, or?
No, we have not, not, not directly with anybody at DeChicos.
Right. No, what I expect you about this in particular. Right. It's, it's a comment, and I think at this point, it's speculation as to how the traffic's going to flow out of Ray Place. So.
Mr. Chairman, just, Phil Greeley, just one, one item, just as part of the traffic study, just to point out that the development across the street, the enclave, there already is use of the shopping center by some traffic, whether they're just going there to shop or they're going out to 22. The, the traffic volumes, you know, leaving Enclave and coming into Enclave show that traffic does come through the shopping center. So I would expect that this would be the similar situation. But again, they, they've agreed to discuss the whole coordination with the shopping center when they get to the next step, so.
They have. Well, that's encouraging. Good. So your traffic modeling includes traffic going in that direction?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Well, then it's been addressed, it seems, or it will continue to be addressed. Okay. Great. Mr. Sweeney?
Uh, just one, one remaining question that, uh, from the flow standpoint, uh, as I understand it, it's coming down Ray Place to Brook Street, down Brook Street to Scarsdale Avenue, if you will. The only thing is that that intersection of Woodruff and Lakeview Avenue, a spur is not going to be able to handle the flow. It doesn't handle it now, so we should be upfront that somewhere along the line, that infrastructure, either the pipeline or the sewer itself, is probably going to have to be reworked. So at least it's a reasonable solution for everybody that's involved. Now, I don't know how big a job that is, but basically, we've discussed this over a number of years, maybe it's a town responsibility, I don't know, but the idea is that you just can't put a spur in there and hope that it's going to handle the Ray Place issue. It's a lot more than that right now at this point, in my opinion.
Okay. Um, thank you. I think we've addressed, uh, addressed your questions, Mr. Sweeney. Thank you for bringing them forth. Okay. Anybody else in the public?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any, uh, any other members of the public. I will note, it appears that Mr. Sweeney's hand is still raised. I don't know if he didn't, uh, turn that feature off, or he?
Yeah, he just did. He muted himself.
Certainly welcome to.
I, I think, I think Mr. Sweeney's done, and I, I don't see anybody else with comments at this point.
All right, guys, so this is back to us, and now's the part that, um, we've been trying to, we've been working on, and that is if we believe that we should adopt the negative declaration, um, I think everything's represented to us, and I'm convinced that the impact of this project has been looked at, and I don't think there will be any impact such that we can vote on that. Um, gentlemen, I guess we could fire with the vote, or would you like to make, make any?
I, I wanted to simply make the comment that, um, i- in my view, um, the, the biggest issue, um, with, uh, the impact is, is with respect to the massing, but, um, I'm satisfied that, um, based on the 3D rendering that we, we looked at last meeting, um, and the, the fact that, um, it, it, it does seem to be a very well-conceived, uh, project, um, that, that I'm, I'm comfortable enough moving forward with a negative declaration.
And I also just want to clarify something for secret purposes, the threshold is that there will not be a significant.
Yes.
adverse environmental impact, so, so there will be impacts?
Yes, there will be.
And there may be some that are not significant, or there may be some that are beneficial, but this is, the threshold is a significant adverse environmental impact. And for the concerns that you have, it seems like the applicant has demonstrated that they can mitigate the potential impact so that they will not be significant.
Correct. And one further point is, is that, uh, we, I, I know we're, we're all very aware that the DeChico and Sons', uh, supermarket will be opening fairly soon, and that will have a, a very profound impact on the use of that, that property, um, including the Ray Place property. But that's going to happen with or without this application, and, uh, I don't think it's appropriate to charge this application with, um, with, with what is going to happen, uh, irrespective of our decision on this application. So, uh, mindful of, of Margaret's, um, uh, reminder that, um, that, that it is a significant, um, uh, negative impact that we are, are, are looking to, um, evaluate here, not any impact. Uh, again, I, I have, having listened and analyzed, read through, uh, the papers, heard from the public, heard from, uh, the, the, the applicant, heard from, from our consultants, um, I'm quite satisfied with, uh, with adopting a neg deck.
So, that being said, um, I will make, I make a motion to adopt a negative declaration for the secret review of application 19 dash 42, and to throw the application to the ZBA for the consideration of the area variances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So that's good news. The, uh, public hearing is open, and it's going to remain open until, uh, until your application comes back to us. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Greeley and Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Great. Have a good evening.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So the next application is 20 dash 13 Troublesome Brook Pump Station at 10 Leewood Drive.
Okay, and give me a minute to set people up here.
Good evening.
Do I have everyone? Oh, they're coming.
The whole team is there.
Yeah. Uh, Lino, can you see if I'm missing anyone? I, I think I have everyone.
Let's see, I think you do, just double check, Margaret? Yep, Steve, I have Joe, uh, yep, I think we have everyone.
Okay, now I do, I do have a call-in user that's not identified, that, that may be Vince, did he want to participate as well, or is he listening in? I'm not sure who this is because it's not identifying who it is.
Yeah, I believe Vince was calling in.
Okay, so I'll, we'll see.
Hopefully it's Vince.
Uh, oh, you know, it's not allowing me to promote him, so I can allow, let's see. Vince, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you go. Okay, now you're all set. Everyone's here.
Thank you.
That's Vince.
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, so if I may, I think, as the applicant probably knows, the reason, the reason we're here is to try and, uh, to do the same thing we did on the, the last project, see how we feel about the, um, adverse effect on the environment, and, um, and then if, if possible, vote on that and move you forward to the ZBA. Um, but right now, I think the format we're going to do is the same as the last one. Um, we're going to first listen to our consultants. Um, well, yeah, we'll first listen to our consultants, and then we'll go back to, uh, to you guys. So first is Mr. Greeley.
Hello again, Philip Greeley, Maiser Consulting. Uh, we have received the latest submission from the applicant. Uh, that included a, uh, June 5th summary letter from Ferrandino and Associates. Uh, that letter addressed each and every one of the comments, uh, that were presented in our May, uh, review and discussed at the last, uh, board meeting. Uh, in terms of traffic conditions after the completion of the project, everything has been addressed. Uh, they've indicated, um, the delivery paths of the salt truck and how that can be accommodated. Um, the only item relative to that, and they seem to be agreeable, which would be a site plan approval condition, is that the route of the salt truck leaving the site requires it to continue down Columbus Avenue, uh, you know, down Dale into Columbus in the section that's somewhat constrained, and, uh, they've agreed to coordinate so that those deliveries, uh, would not occur during peak hours when there are higher volumes traveling to and from the train station. So I think, again, that's just a condition of approval, and there are several others like that relative to, uh, required resurfacing of pavement and, and related items that we don't need to get into that are, uh, outlined there and would be conditions of site plan approval. Uh, the, as discussed at the last meeting, the most significant items, and there have been many clarifications made by the applicant, are the potential impacts during construction. Uh, we have a 22-month construction period, and the applicant has done a nice job of now, uh, clarifying certain items and laying out a schedule and what, uh, types of activities, uh, that could affect traffic flow and how that would be handled. The majority of those conditions are, are pretty standard, uh, in terms of construction projects, and, and would have, not have a major impact on traffic flow in the, in the area. Uh, they have identified a series of, uh, several times during the construction period, I think it's a total of about five times, a total of maybe 16 days over that 22-month period, where they would potentially have to, uh, close off eastbound flow on Leewood Drive, uh, and that would require a rerouting or a temporary detour. Uh, during that time period, they have agreed to use police control and other measures, which, again, these would all be hashed out and made conditions of approvals, but, uh, in terms of to mitigate that condition, they, they've agreed to a series of, of measures. Um, the one item, uh, that I think is of significance, uh, is, is relative to the detour routing during those closures. Now, again, it's, it's a total of 16 days, and that would be something that they would have to commit to, so that we don't have an extended period of lane closures on Leewood Drive. Um, in the original application, they had shown the closure to occur with a detour of traffic eastbound, so this would be coming from the Parkway direction, coming through the tunnel, and, uh, and/or from Dale Road that would want to make a right turn onto Leewood Drive. That traffic would be detoured because there would be no eastbound traffic, uh, basically east of the Dale Road intersection. So under that condition, the traffic eastbound would be, uh, forced to make a right turn if they were coming through the tunnel, and they would be forced to be intercepted if they were heading northbound on Columbus onto Dale, intercepted beforehand and rerouted. The original plan had called for the use of Cross Hill, uh, so you would leave Dale to Cross Hill to Oakland, make a left on Oakland, and then back over to Leewood Drive. Uh, we had pointed out that the ability to turn onto Cross Hill at, from Dale is currently restricted because it's a, it's do not enter one-way signs, and it's only at that intersection. So the applicant has, uh, now indicated an alternate path, which would be to route that traffic down to Benedict. Now Benedict Avenue is the next parallel street to Cross Hill, so if you're looking, you know, from north to south, east, you run, the east-west roadways are Leewood Drive, then Cross Hill, and then Benedict. And then Oakland runs north-south parallel to Dale. So their current plan suggests using, possibly using Benedict, because Benedict is a two-way road currently, and, uh, Oakland is, of course, a two-way road currently. Now, the, the, I, our initial comment was to discuss with the town board and get some input about a temporary detour to use Cross Hill, because if Cross Hill was used to get to Oakland for these temporary time periods, um, it would be fewer homes that would have to be passed by this additional traffic than if that traffic was rerouted to Benedict, because now they would go up Benedict and they would have to pass probably another 20 homes on Oakland before they would get, get back up to Leewood Drive. So again, this is a temporary condition, they've, they've identified the times that it would occur and the number of days that it would occur, so I think they've done a good job in, in nailing that down, and I think, you know, that would be a condition of approval, that those would be the time periods we're talking about. They would use police control and flagmen and other controls, uh, which would be detailed in a work zone traffic control plan that would be reviewed by us, the highway department, the police department, fire, and also, uh, County. So I think, uh, from a, a processing standpoint, and again, this, this can be worked out in the site plan approval process, but our recommendation would be to, um, either look at Leewood Drive possibly be being, you know, widened on a temporary basis, which may not be feasible, but they, they haven't shown that. Um, there are restrictions that, there's utility poles on the north side of Leewood Drive, there are existing trees, et cetera, so for the limited number of days that they're talking about having this detour, it may not be feasible, but we, we would like to at least see that to show that they explored that possibility. Again, uh, I don't think anything very detailed, but it could be hashed out in, in the site plan approval process. The second, uh, uh, best scenario, I think, would be to talk to the town board about a temporary detour that would lift the, uh, do not enter at the end of Cross Hill and Dale, and use that as the rerouting plan during this time period, and that the last resort would be to, you know, have traffic travel all the way down to Benedict and then back up Oakland, because now you're increasing the number of residents that you would be passing on both Dale, Benedict, and Oakland Avenue. So I think that's probably the most significant item that would have to be hashed out. Um, we also had, uh, you know, some items relative to parking. The applicant has indicated that the number of construction workers that would be there, and that they would make arrangements for either carpooling or other off-site locations so that construction workers would not park in the immediate neighborhood, so I think that's fine. I believe the town should just be made aware of whatever those arrangements are, and that they should just continue to work, uh, towards, uh, these resolutions of how traffic would be handled during this, uh, construction period. So I, I think that's kind of a summary of where we are. We, we, we did review, the applicant responded to each comment we had in our previous 12-page, uh, review, and, uh, we've reviewed all of those, most of them, as I said, would have to be conditions of site plan approval, um, but it's really just this during construction time periods that need to be dealt with, and of course, you know, they would have to also address any of the outstanding comments with the fire department, et cetera. So I, I think that's where we are right now, and, um, all the, all the other items they've addressed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Um, so, uh, questions from the board first before we move on here. Um, I had one, because I read some of the reports, and I'm just trying to understand, I guess I could ask the applicant also, I'm trying to understand the size of the trucks that will be coming and delivering the salt. I think it was designated, I could be wrong, HB40, is that what it is? Um, and how, what does that equate, what does that equate to?
You can hand it to that, Joe.
Sure.
That's, I, uh, I forgot the designation, I think it's a WB40.
It's a WB40, okay, got it. What is that equivalent to, a truck that we would now?
I'm trying to think of, uh, what.
I'm thinking it's a 18-wheeler coming down.
Oh, no, it's not. Um, John, John Telesco's on the phone, I know he, he's probably sees them regularly, so I don't know if you know the, a good, uh, equation of a truck to that.
It's a tractor-trailer. It's similar to, um, you know, a water tank truck.
Yeah, water tank, that's true.
Water tank truck.
That's a good comparison.
Okay, that's about the size, right? It's not a, it's not an 18-wheel type truck that you see on the highways.
It's the smallest of the tractor-trailer type vehicles, so the, the WB designation is the wheelbase, uh, they go up as much as WB67s, which are the large tractor trailers that you would see on the highway, so this is the smaller of, but it is a, a, a tractor, you know, a dual, you know, a tractor cab, uh, type unit.
Does 40 indicate the, the trailer length behind it, or?
Wheelbase.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Wheelbase, yes. And they've demonstrated the, the turning tracks, one of the things, uh, just to, to close the, uh, on that, is we were concerned about the ability to make that turn from Columbus onto Fisher, because that's the route that they would, uh, leave, and they demonstrated that that turning track can be accommodated in the existing intersection in the pavement.
I, I have a question, and, and, uh, it, it, I, I'm- I have a question and I may simply have missed something in the application or maybe even in some of the presentation, but as I understand it, the need for the extended driveway, for example, and all of this discussion about, you know, wheelbases and, you know, the traffic flow emanates from the fact that we're using a truck of this size to make deliveries, I think once every two months. Is it feasible at all? Is there something prohibiting deliveries on a more frequent basis in a smaller vehicle that might require less disruption of the site such as leaving the driveway the way it is, in some form or another, effectively the way it is right now instead of having it have to come out onto Dale Road?
Yeah, so the reason for the driveway configuration is really just for that, for that salt truck because of its size, you know, trying to turn that around on our property would not be feasible. As far as other truck sizes, these trucks are a bit specialized in that the way the salt gets delivered is it's actually blown into the tanks. So they have their, the trucks are fitted with compressors and the like to make that happen. So they are a bit specialized. I don't know if they offer other truck sizes as far as that goes. To my understanding is.
I have two questions for you. One is, is there some way that we could have a picture or a, you know, of the size of the truck actually instead of just giving it to us at a number so we could actually see it? And also, just to elaborate on what Phil said, which was, has there been any talk about going around the building with a driveway so it goes back out to Leewood? I mean, you're basically taking the whole lot at this point, the whole piece of property that borders up to Dale Road at this point, basically is not even being used. So in the illustrations that you showed in the last thing, it showed that kind of landscape and everything over there. So if the building is sitting in the middle of the property and you enter the driveway as it is now and the driveway goes around the building, it goes back out on Leewood. Coming out onto Dale Road is a really bad spot. You know, I don't know, you say you've done traffic controls and surveys and everything, but, you know, I happen to live on the block, so I know what it's like at six o'clock in the morning to try to make the turn onto the Bronze River Parkway and that continues all day. It's an incredibly busy intersection. It's a congested intersection and bringing that driveway out onto there is just really not a good idea.
I would like, by the way, Mr. Bon Giovanni or whoever on the team, you said it's not, that you're not sure whether there is another sized truck. I'd like you to find that out for me, okay, for this board. If there is a smaller truck that somehow lessens the impact and works, certainly we would want to consider that. If there is no other plausible truck, fine, we just need to know that, okay?
Yeah, just to make one comment though about that, you know, smaller trucks will be more deliveries, which will be more traffic. Right now, the estimate is this is happening six times a year.
Yes.
Just to reiterate that, so.
But if you get a truck half the size, it'll happen twelve times a year, in theory. Once a month, but you're not having the same, perhaps you're not even touching Dale Road at that point.
So can I circle back here? So Margaret, so the intent was to talk to Mr. Greeley and then talk to Mr. Tramelli and then go back to the applicant and discuss issues such as this. And we started now, so we certainly can continue. But I guess the bigger question is, Margaret, these issues that we're bringing up now, are these issues that are site plan issues that will be reviewed later on when the project comes back to us or, I mean, as far as.
Well, again, that's really up to you. I would still consider these site plan issues again because it sounds like, unless you think that by not understanding the size of the truck, that could result in a significant adverse environmental impact. It sounds like you still have some option, you know, potentially some options with truck sizes with the driveway alignment, that kind of thing. You know, ultimately, it's up to you, but.
Whatever's thinking. Okay, good enough then. Let's, gentlemen, so we'll come back to this and continue speaking with the applicant about these issues because I think they're significant, I think they're important and we should discuss them. So let's, Mr. Greeley go, thank you, and ask Mr. Tramelli to present on this project.
Sure, thank you. We had seen two iterations of this, of the plan, provided review memos on both and a third one more recently in response to Jacob Engineering's June 5th memo responding to our second memo prior to this. And basically, at this point, everything regarding the site with regard to erosion control and layout, some of the site elements, drainage, fencing and whatnot, have really been addressed. There are some very minor outstanding items to deal with, some of the details and nuances with, you know, utility clearances and limits of resurfacing on Dale and/or Leewood, as Mr. Greeley had already discussed, and certainly some of the traffic issues that he spoke, just finished speaking about. But from the site engineering and the civil engineering aspect, I think we're at a very good point with the plan. They provided a stormwater mitigation system to mitigate peak rates of runoff from the site or generated by the site through the hundred-year storm event. So we are satisfied with the mitigation system they proposed. So as far as our memos go and our latest memo, I think any of the smaller remaining items could easily be addressed during site plan approval or a condition of site plan approval should it get to that point. I did note in my memo that there were some comments from the Fire Department that obviously we will report to them and, you know, in their judgment. If you'd like, I could just go through some of the comments briefly. I don't want to speak for them, but I can try to just elaborate on some of their concerns and some of the discussion they've been having with the applicant. We were just talking about turning analysis for trucks. The Fire Department had also requested a similar analysis for their fire apparatus. I understand that they provided, recently provided the applicant with the geometry of that apparatus. So they'll be providing a turning analysis for the Fire Department's review just to ensure that there you can safely navigate through the site in the event of emergency. That'll be forthcoming. There's a discrepancy in their interpretation of the building code, both by the applicant and the Fire Department. It seems the applicant is under the understanding that the building would be classified as a type U building and where the Fire Department would consider it a, it's a group H4, a high-hazard building. I'm not familiar enough with the building code to discuss the nuances between the two uses, but the, what's important here is based on the use group, it would dictate the need or not for a monitored fire alarm system and automatic fire detection. The high-hazard group would require that, is my understanding, and the U group classification would not. So there's still some, I guess, discussion that has to be had between the Fire Department and the applicant and come to a conclusion on what the use classification for the building would be. They have also requested or recommended that the town look to a third-party consultant to review the plan and the building as it relates to the chemical storage, the sodium hypochlorite storage and the operation of the building itself. They did note that the existing facility on California Road does provide the Fire Department with hazardous, they did provide them with a hazardous material management plan and an inventory statement annually and the MSDS sheets for the sodium hypochlorate solution that they're using there as well. So they were expecting, I think, to see the same level of, I guess, material management at this site. I don't know where, I don't want to speak for Jacobs or the Fire Department, but it seems there's still some information to come to satisfy the Fire Department's concerns with the use of the building, the manpower, the expected manpower for the building or lack of manpower, I guess, and the chemicals and the storage of the chemicals within the building. And then there was a final minor comment regarding some signage that I'm sure will be addressed before site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Just one question about what you said. Is a monitored fire alarm required for the, I guess, the higher designation? Does monitored mean with personnel on site or just with some sort of signal that goes off somewhere else?
Central station.
It's, I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent certain, I don't know, maybe the applicant's architect could speak better to it. I would imagine it's, you know, a fire detection system, heat detectors or, you know, smoke detectors or a combination thereof that would then have a central alarm that would send a signal out to the owner, the Fire Department that there's an.
Okay.
Could I just say something very quickly about that?
Of course.
You know, actually, this happens fairly often with either the Fire Department or the building inspector here where there's some different interpretations of the code in terms of a classification of a building. And I know that the Fire Captain submitted his memo on the nineteenth and since that time, the applicant has reached out to the Fire Captain and I think they're discussing, I think it's just going to boil down to an agreement between how this building is classified and then they'll have to do what they have to do or the Fire Captain will say, you know, I understand their interpretation now. So I just wanted to say that's fairly common here, there's some interpretation issues where there has to be some further discussion between either the building inspector or the Fire Captain.
Thanks, Margaret. So before, well, any more comments from the board or questions for Mr. Tramelli or Mr. Greeley? So let's do this. So I just wanted to point out that our concerns as a board are threefold here and one was the traffic concerns, which Mr. Greeley has addressed. The second is the concerns that Mr. Tramelli has addressed regarding the civil issues. And the third is, of course, one that we haven't really discussed yet and that is about the visual and the architecture of the building. I know at the last meeting, we had some comments about that and Margaret and I gave a few to Margaret and Margaret told the applicant about massing and about what we'd like to see. And I think what's been decided is that before we make, start making too many comments, that the applicants meet with the ARB and they're going to have a look at the project on July 7th to give more specific direction and they're going to continue to meet with them as they meet with the ZBA to circle in on a design that the ARB likes. And then everything that we've said previously has been forwarded to ARB. So rather than start critiquing the architecture and the size and the massing of the project right now, we're going to let the ARB do that and then they come back, we'll see what they have and continue from there. So that being said, that's the last concern that we had and I think the next thing is to talk more about the site plan as we were doing and figure out the format or how we go about addressing those issues. So if we go back to the applicant, if they had anything that they were going to put forth or to the board tonight, please do so. If not, we'll just continue putting forth questions.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly and just to reiterate, thank you for, to, for the reports that were given. And again, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Lino Schreuder from Montebon and Commander Frank. Just with respect to the architecture, yes, we are scheduled here before the ARB, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So we will be going there to discuss the visuals. With respect to the Fire District, that's an ongoing dialogue as Margaret had mentioned. So we have been in contact, so we will continue that dialogue. With respect to the trucks and the alternate regarding Benedict and Cross Hill, if it's okay, just briefly to turn this over to Steve Mafia from Parabino Associates just to address quickly a couple of those points.
Okay, thank you, Lino. Steve. To make regarding the salt truck delivery, I'm going to try to do a screen share. Let's see if I have it.
WD forty.
Okay. Can you see that this is a diagram from ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, just to give you a sense as to the profile of a WB forty truck. It shows you the dimensions and feet of the cab and the dimensions of the trailer part, over twenty-five feet. It's a semi-tractor trailer. The truck that would deliver the salt wouldn't have this same box-type configuration. It would be more of a tanker-style truck with the pump on it that delivers the salt to the site. But essentially, when we're talking about the wheelbase of the truck and I guess, I don't know if I can show the whole thing, a little bit farther down, we can see the turning radius of that truck. And this is basically what Jacobs Engineering used to show that the turning radius of this type of truck can fit through the site down Columbus Avenue and onto Fisher. Okay. That salt delivery truck, again, is, we feel, an insignificant number in terms of the, we just talked about it, you know, six deliveries a year or one every two months. We will look into different type of truck, smaller truck and more deliveries, but we don't want to get into a situation where it is weekly or even monthly. I think, I think the way the pump station operates, it's best suited to get its salt delivery every sixty days or so. That's the operational parameters that they usually work with. As far as parking is concerned, Dr. Greeley had mentioned in his opening statements about not parking in the street and this along with a number of other things that were in his latest memo are conditions that is amenable to having added as conditions of approval. And that would include not parking on any, not having any of the contracted workers or vehicles parked on any of the neighborhood streets. We would consult with the town, we would let them know where we're finding off-street parking, off-site parking remote from the site and that we would use carpool situation or some kind of transport of the workers back and forth from that off-site location to the work site. So we're amenable again to that as a condition of approval when we're parking on the local streets. As far as the salt delivery is concerned, not only would we limit the deliveries to off-peak times so that the salt truck isn't out on the roadway trying to turn in and out of the site during the peak hours, we would also coordinate when that happens with the Police Department so that the police are aware of the fact that we are having a salt truck delivery, that it's happening within a certain timeframe and that it's entering from Leewood Drive and exiting onto Dale had been the established route and that it was shown that it would work from a turning radius standpoint. And if there are concerns that the police have about the area that Dr. Greeley had mentioned where Dale turns into Columbus and sort of narrows down to about twenty feet, we would allay their. we would allay their concerns, if they have any. And let them know that whatever the truck has done, that it's on the move, and would be expected to pass by. The police department wants to be on the scene, that would be up to them. As far as the detours are concerned, Dr. Greeley, again, had mentioned that, and this, again, would be a condition of approval, that the detours would be significantly limited in terms of not only the event itself, but the duration. We expect that the detour of eastbound traffic coming out of the tunnel or turning right from Dale would occur five separate occasions, not consecutive days. The longest day, the number of days that the detour would be in effect would be about four days. On five different occasions, and again, not consecutive. The entire construction timeframe is 22 months or over 600 days. So we're talking about 16 days out of the 600 or so days that we would have an eastbound detour. Westbound traffic on Leewood, then towards the tunnel, towards the tracks and the parkway, would not be detoured at all during any time of the construction. The root of the detour, because of the one-way situation, or the do-not-enter situation at Cross Hill, we are opting for Benedict, simply because it's already two ways. It's parallel to Cross Hill, and it's a little bit farther, a little bit longer detour. But we counted the number of houses. There'd be an additional 23 homes that would be passed by the, any vehicle being detoured. However, detours will only be done during off-peak times and again during the day. So no peak hour traffic during the morning or in the evening would be part of that detour. The detour would be established and set up after the morning rush hour is over, and would run during the midday period and before the PM rush hour begins. So only non-peak traffic would be detoured in the eastbound direction from the Dale, the Dale intersection to Benedict and open back to Leewood. We did look into an alternative to widen, to widen Leewood Drive to try to keep the two lanes open, but I'm sharing again on my screen a shot of Leewood Drive looking towards the one-lane tunnel and the railroad tracks. You can see along the right side of the roadway where the curb line is. Utility poles right up behind the curbing, and a beautiful stand of evergreen trees that are part of the front of the golf club. This is directly across from the site, as you can see in the picture. So widening at all in this area in order to maintain two lanes would be not only expensive, but it would be pretty devastating on the landscaping in front of the golf course. And we wouldn't want to go there. The, we're not exactly sure where the property line is, but if there's some widening that is significant, and utility poles that have to be relocated, we may be getting into also right-of-way issues where we're right, we would end up trying to relocate utility poles on the golf course property. So we did, we did look at the potential of a widening in order to maintain two lanes at all times. But that, combined with the fact that we're looking at no more than 16 days out of the 600 and some odd days of construction, or that the detour is the better way, the less onerous way to go, with less impact on the roadway and the neighboring properties. Okay, I think that's all I have to offer at this point in response to what Dr. Greeley and members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, regarding Mr. Tramelli's memo, just Joe Bonjovani, if you can just speak briefly to that?
Yes, yeah, obviously, we provided our responses to Keller Sessions' letter, and Mr. Tramelli has gone through with some of those comments. We, you know, basically concur with everything. We take no issues with any of the comments, so that's one item. I just have one other item I'd just like to add about the, you know, we're talking about the site plan and Dale Road access, the driveway off of our property onto Dale Road. As part of the fire, the fire department's review letter, they were asking about turning radiuses. We did get the, we did get the fire truck apparatus dimensions, very similar wheelbase to the WD-40. I think it's a little bit wider vehicle. So when we did put that into our turning radius analysis, we have that done. But it does use Dale Road to leave the site. So, you know, for a similar reason, trying to make that vehicle turn around in our site would be difficult. So that's just how our turning radius shows, shows the path of the fire truck. I just wanted to mention that as well.
So the fire truck heads south on Dale?
That's how we show it leaving the site as the easiest means to make a turn, as opposed to a right turn back onto Dale.
So I have a question, and maybe Mr. Mathis could just address it, because I don't remember hearing it. And that is, when the truck goes down Dale, when it gets to the neck-down part, you said the police department would be notified that the truck was en route? And come, or you could suggest that, or am I misinterpreting what you said?
Yeah, no, what I had, we're, the question was as far as scheduling the salt delivery trucks. First of all, keeping them on a schedule that doesn't put them out there during the rush hours, the morning and afternoon peak hours. So as not to interfere with significant activities at Dale Road, where, as Mr. Cunningham pointed out, it's the intersection. And as Dr. Greeley pointed out, then by the train station. So we want to put, you know, that particular truck, as infrequently as it does occur, as it's expected to occur outside of the peak hours. We would go one step further if the town wanted to make it a condition that we would also notify the police department of the scheduling of that truck. So if they want to be on hand, you know, when the truck, when the truck is leaving the site, they can do so if they want to. They believe that it's necessary. They want to be at that point where the road necks down to make sure that they have to direct traffic. We don't believe that that's necessary, but we're offering that to the town.
You're offering that, I see.
As a, as a, just to give a degree or a level of confidence that it addresses the concerns that Dr. Greeley had pointed to, that the chairman just did about the necking down of Dale Road.
It's just an interesting point, and unfortunately, it's not us. Right, that's Tuckahoe.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the road necks down at Tuckahoe, right, that the sign is right there.
Right, and the police goes on the other side, usually, trying to stop speeders. So he's doing something, might as well help him while he's there. Anyway, okay, so I understand.
Well, it's Cross Hill, it's Cross Hill for East Chester and a task spot for Tuckahoe.
Oh, okay. But at least I understand, thank you. I guess we're going back to plan issues. So I don't remember, and maybe I wasn't paying attention, because it was getting late. When we were looking at this application last time, talking about trucks coming in, trucks coming out. I remember you guys showed us the presentation, we looked at it, and we moved on. Did we, we didn't really, were we ever shown a site plan that showed a truck on it? I don't think so.
No, I never even really saw, saw a drawing of the building and the, you know, proximity of all of the, you know, the property as it's going to be when it's done. You know, we saw renderings of it, but they were really not correct.
Sure.
Well, we have, we have our, as part of the application package, you know, the site, the planning board drawings, there was a turning radius drawing in that set, so it doesn't.
What we're looking for is an actual, here's the size of the property. Here's what, here's the dimensions of the property. Here's the building sitting on it. And show it to us in respect. That's what I would like to see.
Well, that was part of the presentation last month, the site plan. I mean, it was one of the drawings we did, we did bring up. I have it, I can share.
Okay, I'll look through the packages, see if I can find it. We'll review it from there.
Jessica, do you have it available to share on the screen now?
Let's bring it up, sure.
Yes, yes, I can. Share my screen? You can see this now?
Yes.
I'll try and zoom in a bit. So we have our access off Leewood. This is the main driveway. Building sits towards the back of the property, property line here. We have the driveway going out to Dale. This does not show any of the landscape or anything like that, so it's just site features. There's a fence that will go all the way around it. We have a gate at Dale. One of the nice things about this is we're able to pull our operator into this driveway. So the operator visits once a day, you know, for an hour or so. So one nice thing about this is he can pull in off the road and be able to access the gate as needed. As opposed to on this side, where the fencing is, you know, closer to the property line, we don't have that luxury. So that was one of the other reasons for.
So this, the 72, the 72 feet from the eastern side of the building out to Oakland Avenue?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and there's, I can't see the figure on there, but there's 25 feet?
In the back. There's 25 feet in the back, yes, that's correct. And we have, this does span three parcels?
Yes.
Right, okay. I was aware of that. This is the township property that we're looking for an easement on. So the way the building is, the building is situated on Suez property. We don't have any above-ground structures on township property. It's mostly pipe and driveway at this point.
All of the excavation that has to be done out on Leewood Drive is all on your piping that's coming into the facility now?
That's correct.
So that's just old piping that's going to be changed out, or different sizes in, or whatever?
Yeah.
Upgrade, upgrade the system.
A little bit of everything, yes.
Okay.
So just a question, and forgive me if it's not very educated, but is there any way to get the truck when it comes out on Dale to swing back and go up Leewood, or it just can't make that turn? It's too tight?
Yeah, that, not without, like someone mentioned, going around back, but I just don't, I don't really.
Yeah, we have to go back around and come out at the same driveway, because it's so tight there.
Yeah, that's pretty tight.
To turn, make a right, yeah.
Yeah, try to make, yeah, I mean, a small, a small truck can turn out and go right onto, because there's an island also. There's an island in the middle of Dale. Right, because it's two lanes of traffic. When you, when you come onto Dale, there's one lane tight when you come through the tunnel, when you make the right-hand turn. And then there's actually two lanes that comes off from Leewood, because if you're coming down Leewood towards the tunnel, you could turn onto Dale. So there's an island.
What's the count on that light, in terms of, you know, how many seconds is it red?
That light changes all of the time.
It's very, it's quick, right?
Well, exactly. And, you know, I mean, it's, it changes.
Yeah, well, because you have.
Different times of the day, it's different. Usually, I would say the average is about five cars can get through it.
Right.
And that's being generous.
Right, because you have the Bronx River traffic, north and south.
Those cars, those cars would back up past that driveway, but being that it's only a salt truck to six times a year. I mean, one of my bigger concerns is the construction, the construction of this project. And the havoc that it's going to, you know, take on the community. And the traffic of, you know, I mean, the excavation, the trucks, tandems, equipment. That two years is going to be tough.
Deliveries.
Yes.
Yes.
Deliveries, they say they're going to be, you know, two, but really come at seven. All right, well, the plan makes sense. I see why you did what you did.
To address, as far as the trucks are concerned, during, during construction, we would have most of the truck activity at the beginning of the project during the demolition and excavation for the foundation of the new, new building. We estimated the number of trucks, I believe that was in our response letter to the town. And it would be over the course of a few months, not, and not at that level for the rest of the, for the rest of the construction. Once that busy activity at the beginning is done, truck activity would be limited to occasional delivery of materials. And not significant, maybe a few trucks a day for a couple of days. And then once the stuff is delivered, then the contractor is working with it, with the building material, with the the lumber, the stone that they have to work with. Later on, in the project, the equipment is delivered, but it's a, you know, a flatbed truck, probably about the same size as the WD-40 salt truck that we talked about. And then, and then, you know, that, once the equipment is on site, then it's moving around by smaller forklifts, that kind of thing that's within the building, putting everything in place. So it's, you know, it's a construction period of months or so, but I, you know, I would say that it's it's probably not a nightmarish situation. And again, we're parking our workers off-site somewhere, we've got a carpool. Our conditions are going to be acceptable to us not to park on the street, so we're not blocking lanes.
Right. I have one question.
Sure.
Mark, you want to go, or?
No, no, go ahead. I was just going to ask you about the driveway. I was going to ask if the driveway, this proposed driveway is going to go in first? So that, that access is through for the whole project?
Joe can answer this specifically, but I think that during construction, only the Leewood access will be used coming and going.
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to try.
Well, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I think it might have been in somebody's comment letter.
Yeah, because that alleviates a lot of it, because I mean, really, that's when your biggest amount of traffic is there, during construction.
So I'm not, yeah, go ahead, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
The other, the other suggestion or question I had was, you were talking about, you know, off-site. I've done a number of big projects where we, you know, bring people in from the outside in areas that are, for instance, in Rye. Some big homes that were built out there, and they basically parked in the Rye Beach parking lot. Then they had basically two shuttle buses that brought all the guys in, because they couldn't park on the streets. You guys have the quite large parking lot over at the facility on California Road. Why wouldn't that be considered to put, you know, the personal trucks over there and just have a shuttle bus that ran the guys back? It's, you know, less than a five-minute drive. Just a suggestion.
That's exactly the kind of thing that we're suggesting and would be willing to make a condition of approval, that it would be an off-site location. And it could be, it could be that, it could be a yard owned by a contractor who's working on the project somewhere in East Chester or a neighboring town, where our, whoever's working, that contractor himself, or herself, and other.
Or even the golf course.
Would meet there, and then, and then carpool over to the site. Golf course is a possibility, it is, you know, there. Our, our focus was try to keep as much traffic out of the neighborhood as we could. So, you know, even if we, if we said we'll park at the golf course, it would mean that.
So, you know, even if we, if we said we'll park at the golf course, it would mean that uh the 10 to 12 or so. Um, trips that would be made by our, the workers would end up in that area, in that intersection.
Right, that's true.
You know, we're trying to.
Sit at that four-passion you like.
Right, we're trying to keep them out of the neighborhood altogether if we can. Maybe only two or three vehicles access the property uh around, you know, 7:30 in the morning, bringing, bringing the workers to the site. And then another couple of vehicles leaving the site with them uh before the PM peak hour. We try to get everybody out of there by four o'clock uh before the uh the evening peak hour begins. So not only are we, I'm sorry, man.
No, I'd say that's a very effective way to deal with, no, with the shuttle bus or something like that, it's great.
Yeah, we, we agree and we would, we would, uh, we would make that a condition of approval.
A quick question on the site plan as we're looking at it. So the drive width is 20 feet. Um, is that a standard for a drive aisle regardless of the type of truck pulling through in it? Most trucks have the same width, don't they? Like, if you shrink to a smaller truck, it would be the length of the truck that would change, not the width of the truck, right, obviously?
Pretty much, yeah, there may be some minor differences, but yeah, you need to fit in a lane. So uh, the driveway, we, we tried to keep it to a minimum, you know, recognizing the residential zone as far as width goes. There, there are some considerations, you know, we do, we do have this truck, this delivery that's going to happen. We want to make sure we get another vehicle by that, that delivery truck at the same time.
That's the reason.
Yeah, so we, we did want a little space. Um, and then certainly as you get towards the exit of the uh, um, of the property. When you make that turn and your back end swings out, you do need some, some, some pavement there as well. Um, so that was part, that was, that was part of it. Mostly it's to get another vehicle by when we have a salt delivery site.
Why would you need that? The salt delivery comes six times a year. Can't that vehicle just wait in back? I mean, I can't believe the driveway's width is based on that occurrence.
It was a consideration just to have the, the ability that that driveway is not uh, not blocked. We can certainly look at making.
I mean, that'd be awesome. If you can make provisions for us to just have the width large enough only for the truck to get through. And if there's another vehicle, they could just wait. Right, there's no one there. I mean, it's the guy that monitors the site once a day. He can, he's going anywhere.
So basically, basically what you're saying is a 14-foot width, but where you have to turn, that's where you sort of grow a bit on the radius.
Yeah, the en- the entry and the exits probably would need to be larger. Um, you could probably shrink it a little in the middle. I mean, certainly when the salt truck comes, there will be an operator there, so there is going to be another vehicle uh onsite that, when these deliveries happen, so.
Yeah, okay, well.
How long, how, how long is the delivery when you say the operation for?
John, can you speak on how long they're usually onsite for?
Yeah, it's usually about two, two and a half hours.
Excuse me?
It's usually about two hours.
Two hours?
Yes. By the time they get set up and, and uh we have to have two operators present. Uh, in addition to the driver when they do the delivery.
Oh, how do they get there?
They, they come in a, in a uh company vehicle.
They come, so there's another vehicle. Right.
Yeah.
Right, there's a truck plus.
They may come together or they may come in separate vehicles.
Yeah, I understand.
For safety.
Right, but they're, they're all together, so they egress in and out together, okay.
Yeah.
It's the operator, we're going to keep sitting there for two hours? Well.
So has there, has there been any analysis in terms of uh the probability of which fire department the truck will be coming from? Is the one in Tucko closer or is the one near Lord &amp; Taylor's closer? The reason why I ask is because I see the diagram, I know this is for the salt truck, but just for future, I guess you'll, you'll come by this again. Uh, when you provide the plan for the turning radius on the fire truck. But it looks like the turn coming, I guess going north on Dale. From the fire station in Crestwood would be quite tight. Um, by that, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is the fire truck will have to veer into oncoming traffic. And then turn up the driveway to get to the facility.
Yes.
Has there been any analysis in terms of that or not yet?
No, what we've, and we have done, we have completed the turning radius and now it has not been presented yet. I mean, I have, I have it, I can show it to you uh today. Um, but we just, we just assumed that it would be coming from Leewood similar to the truck traffic that we're going to have. Uh, that it would be coming from Leewood and making a left turn into the site. And then exiting from Dale and making another left turn off onto Dale.
Okay. I just, I, in my, my opinion, I think it should probably be done in both ways, only because I would think. The Tucko station is probably closer than the one on uh Wilmore, if I'm not mistaken.
Over the Waverly Station?
The Waverly?
Yeah, it would be Waverly.
Waverly is the closest.
It's Waverly. So it'll be Main Street, there's Main Street, there's Chester Heights, and there's uh Wilmore. The street stations in East Chester Fire Department, right? And I don't, I don't know that the Tuckahoe uh station will be answering that, so it would be right by Waverly.
So.
Okay.
I guess we don't know which they're, which way they're coming, right?
Right, well, they could come from either direction, as.
I guess, right, they come from either direction, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Speaking out loud here.
Yep, so this, I guess you said you're going through this right now, you're trying to see how the fire truck lays on this. And if this, this driveway is going to change in size, right, or have to be modified?
Yeah, we did look at it. It, it, it should be fine. The uh, the turning radius of the vehicle did not cause any issues, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Left, making a left turn, that is. I, I, we have not evaluated for a right turn into the site from Dale, uh, from, from Dale.
Right, so I'm curious about what you said about getting the, the car situated to go by, if you could look at that. And tell us if there's any change to this, that would be appreciated. And the other thing I'd like to say, and maybe you have in the presentation, just because in my mind, the renderings from the street, can we just flip back to those? The visuals of what all the, what the driveway looked like?
The, the original renderings?
The ones that we saw last time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of it. Is that the only one you guys put?
No, you see, you see, go, go back to the one, go back to the one you had. This is what I was referring to. You see how, you know, the, the front is okay, but you see as it goes to the west there? And then there's that other tree line over there, it looks like it's wrapping around the building. Because there's no road illustrated in this drawing to the right. I was thinking, I was thinking that the driveway could have just went around the building and came back out where the truck is. Because I mean, this sidewalk is going to be here on the front?
Yeah, we have, we have multiple egress means and.
And it's going to go down Dale Road, the sidewalk?
There will be uh.
And it's, and it's going to stop, it's going to stop dead at the first house that's right behind you.
Now, we don't have any real sidewalk on, on this, on the.
Okay, cool, all right, that makes it, there's not one on, on Dale Road, roadside, so it's just.
You have it around this way on the back.
Oh, it is, it's coming around.
Yes.
It comes around the radius.
It comes.
And it comes down to the first residential property and stops.
Yeah, and you can see, we have a couple of doors in the back.
Apron, yeah, you have a, you have an apron around the building.
Uh, so.
Yeah, see, see on that, that one there, yeah.
This is from Leewood, yeah, from.
From Leewood, correct.
Well, you see how you have a lot of concrete?